Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, united in the heart, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a lot to get through tonight, so Nancy texted me this afternoon, something came up urgent that she could not be here. I'm sure Amador will be here momentarily. We do have a quorum. Kristen, Stacy, and myself is here, so we'll continue with business. Okay, 201, approved upon the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the 2021-2022 Sullivan County Board of Cooperative Educational Services Administrative Budget in the amount of $3,187,717. I need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Motion by Stacy, second by Kristen. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All ayes. 202, ballot for election to the Board of Cooperative Educational Services. Approval to cast one vote for each of the following vacancies on the Sullivan County Board of Cooperative Educational Services Board. Mrs. Linda Berkowitz, three-year term, Fallsburg Central School. I need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Need a second.
I'll second.
Motion by Stacy, second by Kristen. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Mrs. Linda Fisk, three-year term, incumbent Livingston Manor Central School. I need a motion. Motion?
Motion. I'll second.
Stacy, Kristen?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Simi Williams III, three-year term, Tri Valley Central School. I need a motion.
Make the motion.
Second.
Aye.
Stacy, Kristen, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of the ballot authorization of the budget, Proposition 1, April 20th, 21 regular meeting, BOCES budget adoption. Approval upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the following resolution be placed on the May 2021 ballot. The Board of Education of the Eldred Central School District is hereby authorized to expend $18,607,962 during the 2021-2022 school year. I need a motion.
Make the motion.
Second.
Aye. I'll make the motion.
Motion by Stacy, second by Kristen. All in favor? Aye. Ayes have it. Approval upon the recommendation of superintendent that the following resolution be placed on the May 2021 ballot. That the Board of Education of the Eldred Central School District is hereby authorized to levy tax annual in the amount of $15,800 and to pay over such monies to the Board of Trustees of the Sunshine Hall Free Library. I need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Motion by Stacy, second by Kristen. All in favor? Aye. Approval of the property tax report card. Approval upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education of the Eldred Central School District approved the 2021-2022 property tax report card. Need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Stacy, second by Kristen.
We'll have a discussion.
Have a discussion. Any discussion on it?
I'm wondering if actually Caleb could give us some insight on the report card.
Yes, okay. So on the report card, the total budgeted amount, so our budget is increasing 1.33%. That's from $18,364 to $18,607. We are reducing the tax levy actually by 1.97%. That is to mute the effect of the compressor station, the reduction in their assessment. That should keep it down to, under current numbers, I don't have everything, but right about 0.85% is what we'll see their taxes go up. That, you know, changes in equalization rate can affect that, and so can, I don't know what properties have gone on, so it might actually work out even better than that. I know that they're constantly developing, so they've developed a number of properties that I don't know about. That could actually reduce that. We have $373,092 below the tax cap. We will be able to carry some of that over to next year, so if something were to happen, we could request an increase to our tax cap next year. You can carry some of that. And right now, they're expecting the public school enrollment to go down by four. I don't know what COVID's effect is actually going to have on that. That's just what, based on our demographic study, what it's going to be. That's, that's a tough one to predict in this era of homeschool. They break it out strangely. I know it looks weird here. It says the total proposed school levy is $11,930, and then they show those exclusions. So they take the exclusions out of that and say that $11,129 is what I'm asking without the exclusions. It's just a kind of a funky way of doing that, but that's, that top, that top part is essentially what that's saying, is we're reducing our tax load by 2%. We're $373,000 below the cap, which we can roll over, and we're expecting to have total enrollment go down by about four students next year. Then on the other hand, now, New York is temporarily allowing us to have 8% in our appropriated reserves. So you'll see in there that I'm expecting that to go up by about $300,000 this year, which will put us at about 5% over on the unappropriated. That's 1% over what we're traditionally allowed to. Right now, it's three years they're saying that we can have 8%. I'm expecting similar amounts of the, this assigned appropriate fund balance, just for the board's knowledge, is essentially things that I have not ordered yet, but are encumbered. So Dr. Morgano or Tracy has approved the purchase order, but the order hasn't gone in and we haven't received it yet, so it's not in the account payable. But it has been appropriated from this year's funds. Then there's always some nominal amount like that that's left over, you know, like for instance, I might call up the guy who's going to do the ceiling for our driveway, might call them up in May, create the purchase order, appropriate funds from this year's budget, and then have it done in July. Not payable yet because he hasn't done it. I don't hold the money, but that's what that is. And then the restricted fund balance going down $117,000. That is, I am have used money for a first compensation claim. I think I had, you know, you guys approved that actually. That was sometime in the middle of the year, but yes. I'm expecting that to go down right around there. I'm not expecting, however, you'll see on here, to use any of it between March and the end of the year, and we're not expecting to use any reserves next year. And that's what the bottom portion of that report card says.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Caleb. All set? All good? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we got through that. Thank God. We are on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Morgano. Unmute yourself. He's talking too.
Yeah. Dr. Morgano, unmute yourself. There you go.
How's that?
There you go.
Nice. Takes longer to do that than it takes to do the report. We have a comprehensive plan in place to bring kids back. And in doing this plan, we took into consideration the staff's health and well-being, the teachers' health and well-being, and the kids, and the bus drivers. And that's one of the reasons why we included a 4% threshold. Had the county done something similar, they would be in good company with Oster and Duchess, who I think both have a rolling cap. I think if we're in a situation where it's 9%, and we start bringing kids back, we're doing a great disservice to our families. So that's one potential limitation, but it's a good one. The second one, I don't understand. We ask the county for their blessing on the plan. Not, they don't need to officially approve it. They don't need to officially not approve it. Just tell us whether or not there's something missing in the plan that we have to consider. Now, that could be something as easy as, we think it should be six feet for everything. Your plan calls for three feet in some, in some instances. Tracy's going to send, file it with the State Department, and we'll see what happens. Stranger things have happened than the state turns around and says, "Looks good to us." I don't know if there's any issues that anyone has in the plan as it is going forward. Bonnie, you have any issues?
I just saw the plan for the very first time about an hour ago, so I haven't even had a time to read it thoroughly, so I really can't comment at this time.
All right, please do, and if you have any issues, let me know. An echo is for everybody. If you see something, let me know. We're not, this is not something we do on a regular basis, and I hope I never have to do it again. This is more like running a mash unit than running a school. But thank God, we have great kids. The only person that's ever in the hallway because he forgot his mask is me. The kids have their mask on all the time that I've seen. I've never seen a kid in the hallway without a mask. I've seen them make a statement that their nose was not part of their respiratory system. But that's neither here nor there. Now, couple of other things this evening. We created the position last year of Director of Instructional Services. I'll be talking to the high school faculty about that position this week. Scott Krebs is going to fill that position. I like Scott. I think he's one of the most brilliant people I've met, and he can do a great job. And he is going to do a great job. We've got to move forward academically, and Scott can do that for us. The second thing is, we created a position of Director of Technology. And I'm recommending Jed Jackie be that person. Over the past 10 years, Jed has practically built our system. He works for BOCES now. I made him an offer that was acceptable to him, and he'll have his own independent contract for the next several years, and I think we cannot go wrong with having Jed as our technology person. This year, I don't think there's any technology people, except one, getting an award. And I transitioned then to Tina Rodriguez, who I nominated for an award. I reviewed it with the board. They were 100% on board with it, and so were my administrative colleagues. And I'd like to announce that Tina Rodriguez is going to win the award for Friend to Education for Eldred. Congratulations, Tina. Tina is always there when you need her. And you need somebody with a positive attitude when you're dealing with technology. Because there were times I wanted to take all of these new phones we had, bring them out in the parking lot, run them over. The other announcement I have this evening is Mrs. G from the elementary school was nominated by me as Teacher of the Year, Most Outstanding Teacher. And she's a person, and I told her, "You fly under the radar." She said, "Yes, I do." She doesn't make a big show of things. She's not flamboyant, but her kids learn things that they wouldn't learn otherwise. And she's a great teacher. I would love to have my child in her class. So congratulations, Mrs. G. And you are? Are you on this crazy system we have here? Well, we'll have to talk to her tomorrow. Are there any questions anyone has about?
Does the board have any questions for Dr. Morgano?
Excuse me?
Does the board have any questions for you? Nothing? Board has nothing for you, Dr. Morgano?
In terms of my status, I'm making more progress than I thought. In the past couple of days, it's gotten a lot better. The issue is not whether I have bone and muscle enough to do things. It's a question of whether or not the pain is too great to do it. And I had two operations, one on the 22nd and another one a week later. So I don't know many people that had two spinal operations in a week. But I'm getting there. I want to get up and walk around and get back to my office. I miss it. Thank you.
You'll feel better, get better, and we're waiting for you to come back.
I understand Caleb ate all my jelly beans.
You ate all of his jelly beans.
Not all of them. There's still a couple handfuls left. The machine ran out of batteries.
You better go to the store and get batteries for jelly beans.
They do sell batteries at the Dollar General.
Yeah, you should probably get new batteries along with the new-
You all set, Dr. Morgano?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Okay, secondary principal report.
Okay, so the first thing I want to start with is our AOK Acts of Kindness Award. And this I actually wrote up for Ms. Rodriguez, so Tina gets the AOK for Acts of Kindness. Because of the fact of sometimes we do want to throw technology out the window. She goes above and beyond, has been constantly at my beck and call for GRM, I know for Mr. Krabs. She just works diligently, and she's just amazing. So I just want to present you with the AOK Award. She does not want to get up, and I make it up.
Hey Tina, I'll put in a word for an ice cream.
So as far as the rest of my report, we have PSATs. We did have that. We did have 21 students come in for that, and that was offered up to 10th graders, 9th and 10th graders. We offered it to 41 10th graders and 17 accelerated 9th graders. They were offered this opportunity, but because of different transportation issues, quarantine status, or they just did not want to take it, we did have 21, 21 students come in. That's 36%. So we're hoping to improve this number next year to get, again, prepare for those post-high school choices. And this was the first year we added 9th graders to it, so we did have a big turnout. 9th graders take the accelerated, so I was pleased with that. So moving next year, we'll just increase that number. We also offered the ASFAB. Kids stayed last week after school for that. Five students came for that. The ASFAB is the Armed Forces Test, so we did have five students do that. And again, they gave up their afternoon to take this, so they are thinking about post-secondary plans, which I really appreciate. Third quarter academic certificates are going out this week and next. It's a lot better than our second quarter, just for the fact of we don't have to deal with snow. So those are going out this week to the kids for principals list, high honor roll, and honor rolls. We're going to take care of that. We have prom on May 15th, so we are holding a SAD presentation. On May 10th, we will get confirmation from New York State Troopers. The state police are going to do a presentation. We get confirmation tomorrow. It will be held in-person, fifth period, and Google Meet. So if a student cannot attend in person, they can join us virtually. We are asking students that if they wish to attend prom, they attend this presentation, the SAD presentation, and then sign the pledge so that we can check those boxes off, so they can fully appreciate prom. Today, we did give their ELA state assessment to the 7th and 8th graders that were in person today. Very smooth. The next group will be next Wednesday on the 28th. Next Tuesday is our SAT. It is done during school. We are urging students to take the SAT on this date, just for the fact of we know that colleges have kind of given up that requirement because of COVID, but we are still urging students to take advantage of this opportunity because of the fact it gets them kind of acclimated to their standardized assessments that we did not have last year. If you have any questions, please contact Ms. Garan at garank at eldred.k12.ny.us. Any questions, because that's getting ready to rock and roll Tuesday. Senior 21, when we do the 21 out on the front lawn, that will be taking place also on the 27th at 7:20. So that's when the seniors will show up. We get a nice photo op from them. Very excited about that. And then, because at least it's something normal, we did not get to, I don't think we got to do this last year. We are selling Eldred gear apparel, and that is, you can, you have lots of choices. There is a QR code, forms for the QR code or for where to go online. They are in the main office. And that ends, the deadline is May 2nd for that. Our 7th and 8th grade math assessment, that will take place on Tuesday, May 4th, and then the following week, May 11th, for the students that are going to be in person. Again, back to prom, just to know that, make sure it's May 15th. We are, we mentioned at the last board meeting, it, there is promenade here starting at 5 o'clock. Community can join us, socially distanced, mask wearing. But then you can see all the beautiful dresses, which they, the kids have been very kind to show me during lunch to tell me what they're getting and how it's bedazzled. The other thing is the reopening plan that Dr. Morgano spoke about. I did send out for the faculty. They can, we are going to meet on April 28th, so I can answer questions and concerns, so we can move forward in a safe and positive manner. The last thing I have is we are looking to form the Elementary, Elementary Principals Interview Committee. So if any parents or staff would like to volunteer to be a part of this process, please email me so that I can create this committee. We do not have a date yet as to when the meetings will happen. I just want to get the process started because we do want to have the interview selection, the committee made, and then we'll do dates. So if you have any questions about that, you can email me. And that's it for the superintendent's, I mean, the secondary principal's report. I do have the student report. And the only thing I have from the student report is student council running a promposal contest. So promposals, you can submit your photos to the student council account on Instagram. If you have any questions, that'll be for Ms. Walsh or Ms. Tokolsky. So I'm seeing lots, again, cute pictures of promposals. The kids are being really awesome about it. They're being positive, and it's just nice to see. So I have that for secondary report and for students.
Any questions for Tracy? The May 20th, or the June 20th, what is that? That's a senior thing you said? Sunday? Is that a Sunday?
The 20, April 27th is the senior 21, the class photo.
April 27th, oh, okay.
Yep, and that's at 7:20 in the morning.
Traditionally, that's done in the fall, but we held off because of social distancing. So we did have it last year.
Oh, good, okay. Thank you, Bonnie. I could not remember.
Any questions for?
Tracy.
All good?
Yes.
You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
The Elementary Search Committee is going to be an important committee. I'd like to see as many people on that committee as is practical.
Okay. Elementary principal report. Mr. Krabs, you're on.
All right, we're up. I kept it short because I know we had a lot tonight. As you know, we brought back our second grade, so at the elementary school currently, other than students that are at A and B in 4th, 5th, and 6th, and our precares, the rest of the building, kindergarten, 1st, 2nd, 3rd are all in person, full-time. We do have a number of students that are still virtual learning students. We are also, it's come in handy for the students. The teachers have done a wonderful job in those grades of incorporating their remote learners, engaging them in the conversations that happen within the classroom and the groupings that are set up, and also when we've had to quarantine children, they still have been able to participate in ongoing instruction when they're quarantined. So there has been a positive with that. Yesterday, excuse me, Monday, we started our ELA computer-based test. Because we had gone computer-based a couple of years ago, it really went smoothly. Tina came down, worked with us. A couple login issues, and other than that, it went smoothly. It goes smoothly, not only because of Tina, but because of our main office. Jen and Kesia, they print out tickets for kids and gate, so that they can immediately go in. They put in their code. The code comes up. It's the child's name, and it then gets sent, because we only did step, stage one or session one. This year, everything will be electronically scored by our rec, and we'll get the scores back hopefully sooner than later this year, because there's not a second portion where they have to read extended responses. So this year, it's all just multiple choice questions for the kids, and we did session one with them. It went very smoothly. When they come back next week, same with Tracy and the junior, senior high school, the other group, which would be Group A, would then take the assessment. And then we do it all over again for our math assessment the following two weeks. That's all I have to share with you this evening.
Any questions for Mr. Krabs from the board?
I don't have a question, but I'd like for Scott to speak a little bit about Mrs. G from a principal's perspective.
Oh, Ms. G, what a great, I don't know how many people have had interactions with them at the board, but your kids have been probably with her. She is one of the early risers to our building, stays late. She is always someone that just, whenever something needs to be done, or there's a committee to be a part of, she will volunteer. If I need some assistance with something, that somebody doesn't come forth and volunteer, she will always say yes. She's one of those individuals that just puts 110% effort all of the time for the kids in the classroom. During this year, when kids need extra help, parents will be dropping them off. She'll be meeting them at the door, and she will work with them before school or after school. It's always accommodating. It's not just Ms. G, but we're recognizing her for this year, but the staff will above and beyond for kids each and every day. We see that in a number of ways. She is just fabulous.
Thank you. Thanks, Scott.
And just a understanding and caring individual for every kid in the building.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That brings us to the district treasurer report. Come on over. Caleb, you're on.
Yes, you wanted it up immediately? You wanted it right?
Yeah, because I'm just using that as my treasurer's report. Yep. I'll add one, one little item to it. Okay, you can just go right to slide two. I mostly do that for the website. Okay, so what we had arrived at, the budget that was presented in March, I did not change the overall size and scope of that budget. That is the same. What we did decide on, and this was in discussion with Dr. Morgano and Scott, and I'm assuming we've canvassed the board on this, and that is that the board has a desire to keep the effective taxer below 1%. We were able to bring that down to 0.85% without affecting anything that was proposed at the last board meeting. So that didn't require any modification of budget. The state had come in, and we're, we're very generous with schools this year. They increased our state aid by 2.1%, which pretty much is going to fill this donut hole of $240,000 that we're going to reduce taxes. The state had declined combining all of those different aids, state aids. The state had declined combining all of those different aids, state aids. And they also declined to offset the aid we're receiving from the federal government by reducing our state aid. So that extra money from the federal government is coming to us and is not going to be offsetting our state aid. So that's all very good news. This is just for the website, but it hasn't really changed much from the last time I presented to you the way our total expenditures are breaking down. Again, between instruction and employee benefits, that's 70% of our expenditures. The rest of it is made up of debt service, transportation, and transfers to other funds. The transfers to other funds, that $120,000 is essentially the portion of our cafeteria program that we pay out of general fund money, which is a combination of state aid and revenue. So that 120 is largely, 90,000 of it is what we need to support the cafeteria program. During COVID, we don't have as many children in, so we don't sell as many meals. And that's kind of the long and short of that.
Caleb?
Yep.
I think it's important for you to mention again that the tax rate is lower than 1%.
The tax rate, the tax increase is going to be lower than 1%.
Right.
And that is the budget.
That needs to be said often.
And it also needs to, I will also mention that that is 100% the effect of the taxer. The school is not asking for any additional money. We're asking for less money. We're asking for $240,000 less than we asked for last year. So if, if, I know, we're not going to, I don't think anybody's going to vote the budget down, but if they were to vote the budget down, your taxes would go up 3% rather than 0.85.
It's not going to happen.
No, I know that, but it just, I just want to clarify that it is not the school that is causing any kind of increase in taxes. We're actually asking for less.
Less than 1%. That's pretty good.
Essentially, by the way, where that came back from in discussions with everybody was, last year, the, the public was very gracious with us. We had promised that we were going to go up to 12% and not the full 14%. When Cuomo threatened to take away 20%, we went up to the 14%, which everybody voted unanimously, pretty overwhelmingly for. And this year, we're essentially giving that 2% back. We're saying we didn't need it. The governor didn't cut us the 20%, and fair's fair.
They helped us when we needed it, and we're going to help them now.
So that was, that was where that came from. As far as instructional initiatives that are included in this budget, there is the creation of a summer school program. You're going to see actually that that was removed from this budget. That was one of the few changes that I had. We are going to use the state aid money that's going to come in. That is required 20% of that one, it's $1,806,000 that we're going to get. 20% of that money has to go to address learning loss. Summer school was pretty much unanimously decided on that that was something that we were going to do to address learning loss. So it just makes sense to use the grant funds for that rather than general fund money. The rest of that, I'm sure, and Dr. Morgano, you can speak to this. That's, that's going to be a decision that's going to get made. Superintendents, I'm sure you're going to involve principals about how that money is going to get spent.
And staff.
And staff as well. Well, I don't want, I don't want to overspeak my bounds on that. I don't want to overstep my bounds and say who's, who's going to be involved, but I, I assume that staff would be involved in that decision-making as well.
I want to see money spent on academic improvement.
Correct.
We, we have, we have the structure for it. We have the staff for it. We have the parents for it. There's no reason why we can't move forward once we're out of this COVID disaster.
Could you go to slide four? Okay. So the creation of the summer school program is in there. We are adding one special education teacher. We are going to add the sign language program. And then, as Dr. Morgano spoke to today, we are adding the administrative position focused on curriculum. This was originally planned for the prior school year, but it was postponed due to uncertain economic conditions. So that is now getting reinstated. There's definitely a shift. We're no longer, finance is not our number one concern now. Our number one concern is academics, which is good. It's our school. And that's our, and that is the overall purpose here. We can go to the next slide. Also included in this budget is the integration of our security systems and the upgrade of the fire systems. I mentioned previously that the fire system is, is end of life at this point in the elementary school. So that needs updating. We've already reached out to the vendors and they're getting that together for us. Also, we use two different security systems. Currently, we use a vendor, a different vendor in the elementary school than we do in the high school. We would like to integrate them and have it managed from, the director of technology would probably be the one managing it. But, so codes can be issued. There's all kinds of need functions that can be done that we'll speak to later as I have more ideas of it. I believe, Dr. Morgano, you were involved in the one meeting. They can set it up so that when somebody swipes a card to get in, the camera focuses on the person coming in. Just enhancements in that. And then of course-
We need one, we need one company. A small school district like this doesn't need two.
And yeah, and it also leads to, to a little more red tape, like if somebody wants me to get them a code for here, it's fine, and then if they have to get that same person-
It's clear what company we need to go with.
Yes.
Let's just get it done.
Okay. Next slide, please. And then the facilities and transportation initiatives. So we're going to need a new van for the transportation department. That's included in here. Scott has already done a lot of work with his staff. He got input from the teachers over there about a new play system. The old playground is out already, if I'm correct?
Yes.
Um, that is something that was end of life as well. And we don't obviously want any of our kids getting hurt. So they have already proposed an upgrade to the system that is in there. So you're going to see like a big equipment number in the elementary school. You're going to see $156,000 on that elementary school line. The bulk of that is the playground system. We're replacing technology infrastructure. We have 22 network switches. We replaced 13 of them, I believe, last year. We're going to replace all the rest of them this year. They run about $5,000 apiece. That's $45,000. When you look at our technology budget, you're going to see, BOSI's expenditure last year was 260, this year's 260. And I had said that the director of technology was coming out of that. That is not, so people don't get confused and think that we are spending additional money on the director of technology. That additional, the reason that's staying the same is there's essentially another $100,000 in equipment that we want to invest in to bring our technology infrastructure up into place here. That includes, and I also have Jeb and Tina looking into, Tina might be able to help me with this right now, the wifi-
The access points?
The access points. That is what, so that can improve connectivity here.
Yeah, so we're going to probably buy years or more, and then better wifi and construction.
Yeah, so we're looking to put a significant investment into our technology infrastructure here. Repairs to the parking lots, they've just been put off because of financial reasons. They're your basic seal and paint, each of the lots at the buildings. And then there's going to be a snow sweeper for clearing the buses. That's going to have to go out to bid. Currently, right now, they essentially melt it off at the top of them or have to push them off, which in a major snowstorm doesn't give very much time for them to get ready and can cause delays. Most of the other school districts and contractors use them. It's just a big kind of teepee that the bus drives through and sweeps all the snow off the top of it. Those are the major initiatives. Everything else is essentially rollover. It's our staff, contractual raises, our supplies that we would normally buy. And so that is what is included in that budget. Another quick note about the money that's coming in, because there's things in the newspaper, you're getting, all the schools are getting X amount of money. And now vendors are aware of it, so vendors are sending us stuff saying you could get access. So I get calls from people sometimes in the school that says, oh, I heard there's this grant money available. And yes, it is. It comes from the state. They have not given us guidance on how we're going to get our 1.8 million yet. I can't apply for it yet. The only parameter I'm aware of is that 20% of it has to go to learning loss. And I do believe that, that they haven't designated an amount to us yet. That amount has to go to socio-economic-
Social and emotional.
Social and emotional. Other than that, I don't know the exact period. I know September 2023 was the last one. This one's probably going to go later. It's going to be multi-year. It is going to be, I've gotten guidance from the state. It's going to go into the special aid fund. What that means is it does not go on the general fund budget. And it also doesn't, isn't tied to those timelines. To give you an idea, last year, when they approved the $170,000 in, I believe it was April for the CARES Act, I did not even get the application until December last year. So it was eight months later. That was when you got the application. And once you get the application approved, you have to apply for the money to come to you. But you can't apply all the way back to April. So what might happen is in December, they might say there's an application. I can say I'm using it for summer school four months ago. And it's a wonky process. But, you know, if anybody asks that 1.8 million, we do not have guidance on how it needs to be spent, how we can get our hands on it, and what the period of time. So if anybody asks, that's, that's the state of that. It's not just sitting in a bank account right now.
Do you think they will dictate to us how we have to spend all of it?
No. I think that they're going to do percentages. I think it's going to be 20. And I do believe the social, emotional is going to be 5%. That's what they did for the, the state as a whole. So I think the state's probably just going to dictate that amount down to us. It's pass-through money, so they give it to the state, the state gives it to us. I think it's going to be a two-year grant period like the last one was. So I think it's going to be probably April of this year to September of '23, which is why I brought that up. It does not all have to be spent in one year. And we will have to do an application for it. It's not going to run on a regular budget year, so it's not going to be something May. You can involve the public in it, but it does not have to go to public vote. So you can do a public committee if you want. You just, but it's-
Well, let's get it. We'll figure out where we're going.
Right, yeah.
We'll see the account, then we'll worry about it.
Yes. So that's the information I have. Well, no, you, you got to worry about it before it goes in the account because they don't, they make you spend first and then they give you the money back.
We know we're definitely good. We'll worry about it. Any other questions for Caleb from the board?
Caleb, did you say BOSI's tech was the same, 260?
Or close to it, right?
I saw 280, so.
Was it 280? But it should be, I, what I wanted to do was clarify confusion because one question people might have, because I told everybody we're going to hire this tech and then I'm going to get rid of the tech is, but they're going to look at the budget and they're going to say, wait, it's the same. But that's actually going to be equipment. That's going to be our switches, our laptops, our computers, or things like that. It's not, it's not people.
All right, thanks.
Was 260, I misquoted? Yeah.
It's 280, just here.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Caleb from the board? Thank you, Caleb.
Well done.
Thank you. Always. I guess it's my turn, huh? All right. Brings me up to me. I'd just like to thank Tracy for stepping up to the plate while Dr. Morgano was out with his back. And I know he's very involved in it. He still texts me, emails me at 4:30 in the morning, 5 o'clock in the morning. I go down to breakfast table, my phone's lit up, it's him. But I hope him for a speedy recovery and I sincerely want to thank you, thanks Tracy for all her hard work that she's done stepping up to the plate. We've been very, very blessed to have her. And we really haven't missed a beat going forward. I'd just like to elaborate on the budget. There's not much to say. Caleb and Dr. Morgano kind of stole my thunder. But as of last year, we said that we were going to kind of try to be down under a percent for the budget because we took money that we didn't know we needed, we were going to have to use last year, and we didn't. So on behalf of the board and the administration, we are sticking to our word and we are keeping the budget down. And I think that's a good thing for a small school district, and it's a positive thing. And I think we're moving in a positive direction from a few years back. So that's all I have to say. And I believe speaking on behalf of the board, we support this budget 100%. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment on the consent agenda items only. Any public comment? Tina, as I always say, something comes up as we move on, we will always go back to it.
Can I make a comment?
You said enough. No, go ahead.
Hey, Scott?
Yes.
The teacher's, the teacher's contract is done. The administrator's contract is done. We're waiting on lawyers to review the documents. But both negotiations went well and we arrived at a mutually agreed upon outcome. So I just, if people ask, what happened to the teacher contract? Haven't heard much about it. Waiting on the attorney.
Okay.
He's got to read it and make sure there's no errors.
Okay.
It has been read on the side and we have not, I have no issue with it on our end, but you always got to have a way to look at it.
I have a comment on the public gen, consent. One thing I'm wondering is, is the more I look at the incentives that we're giving for bus monitors, food service helpers of $2,500, when you figure it out hourly, they're getting way more than your substitute teachers are. And I wonder how we as a district are going to start to wonder why we have no subs. I know it's a nationwide shortage, as well as the teacher nationwide shortage. But I think we need to keep in mind those substitute teachers and make sure that we're keeping them in line with the other positions in our district. And that's all I wanted to say about that.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Yeah, Scott?
Yep.
So I apologize. I wasn't here for the last meeting, the whole thing. I'm just looking at the summer school teacher, the rates, their hourly rates. And I'm wondering, you know, if we could maybe get an idea as to why they're getting paid, what they're getting paid, and, you know, as far as like parents of other districts in the county, just to kind of give the public an idea of-
I believe that's, I believe that's contractual. I'll let John elaborate on that. Dr. Morgano, did you hear that question?
No.
It's about the hourly rate of summer school teachers. I believe that's in the contract already.
It is.
It's in the contractual about working over and above.
I can explain how it goes.
All right, hold on. Caleb, do you want to explain that?
It covers-
Yes, so their hourly rate is contractual. It takes their base salary divided by 180 days, which is how many school days we typically have, divided by six, which is how many periods New York State considers a full-time teacher. And that comes up with an hourly rate. And that's what's in the contract. So base salary divided by 180 divided by six is the hourly rate.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment? All good, Tina? Okay. I need a motion to approve consent items 601 to 901.
I'll make the motion.
You second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on any consent items from the board? With that being said, all in favor? Aye.
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 All ayes have it. Old business. Anybody have an old business to bring before the board? Okay? Any new business? I do. Petitions have been handed in, I believe as of yesterday at 5 o'clock. And the only sole person running is Amador Laput. And I'll be happy to have him back. I believe the board will be happy to have him back, any administration. So that's all I have for new business. And we are at second public comment on anything. Anything at all. Second public comment.
Okay, I guess I'm that one once again. I'm sorry. I noticed that at the special meeting on April 6th, that we dissolved the A, B, C schedule of students attending school in A group, A B group, and A C group. So we no longer have that structure in place effective yesterday. However, we only have B group students in the building. So if we absolve that, we dissolved that for board action last meeting, I'm wondering, what are we operating under? What, what, how is this going? I don't understand.
I can speak on that.
Go ahead.
With the dissolution of the A, B, with the A week, B week, we have not moved forward in that resolution because we are still operating with, under our continuing- not moved forward in that resolution because we are still operating with, under our continued reopening plan from September, so we're still at six feet, so we are continuing, like this week is B week, um, so those students that come in B week, they're still coming in, so even though the board passed it last week, or last, the special meeting, it was contingent upon an updated reopening plan. Okay, it didn't say that, so I thought, it, it said effective, um, April 19th, so I just assumed it was yesterday. Thank you so much. You're welcome. Um, and then I, I have another question, I see that we are offering a new course next year, but I am wondering, who, who in district is certified to teach, uh, American Sign Language?
Hey, hey.
I'm sorry, Dr. Morgano, go ahead.
Is, the course is gonna be taught by someone online from a college, is one of our people is gonna oversee, right, Tracy?
Yes. So you have a teacher of record coming out of the foreign language, the American Sign Language that we will be offering, um, that will be done, it's basically like a distance learning class, so it'll be offered for one period. I don't understand the need for that when we don't have a business program, when we don't have, um, a reading teacher, when we don't have a guidance counselor, when we don't have a, um, a, a programming computer graphics, when we don't have so much program that was cut and never reinstated, why are reinstating something that is not a teacher in-house? That's my only question, is, is why is it necessary that we have a third language? I don't understand that.
Can you prioritize the list of things that were cut, your desire to have reinstated, and give it to me?
I absolutely can, but I will, I will want unit member help in that, but I do believe, I, I understand what they want.
All right, it would be nice for me to have that in hand as a list of your priorities, should the opportunity arise for us to have the finances to do it, because the other thing I'm thinking of, I haven't mentioned it on, in this forum, is another guidance counselor. Something, someone split maybe between the high school and the elementary, the elementary needs more counseling time, and the high school needs some time as well.
So my, my, my response to that, Dr. Morgano, is that when I read these plans, these reopening plans, and I read what the, um, percentages of money that's supposed to be allocated, allocated to each thing, and I, and I've read what it's supposed to be, so I'm not sure why, um, Caleb hasn't seen it unless I'm looking at old documents and not new ones, um, it all talks to the social, uh, emotional needs of our students, and they are not being addressed in any way that I can see, um, our kids are lonely, they're anxious, they're isolated, they are, um, depressed, and so I, I feel like, I, I try and take time, but hey, I've got a Regent's exam this year, hey, I've got an AP exam this year, I, I don't, I, I feel like we need to make sure that we are putting people in position come fall to help our kids grapple with living through an epidemic and trying to be educated through an epidemic, and I, I know that you folks are on it, but I just wanna make sure that it's being done.
So I'd like to comment on that. So this is the first year that we are sound with money, as far as where we're going in the future. Yes, the compressor station hit, big money was talked, we knew that that wasn't gonna stay there, that was gonna be grieved, we were not willing to take any chances about putting people back in where we need them to be, and I'm not arguing that point at all, the point as I'm saying is, we need to be financially sound where we're gonna be going in the future every year with a solid budget, with what we're getting in the tax base. We know that now, this year, we found that out, we know that now, so now we're gonna be looking into going forward with what we need to do for academics. This just happened now that we finally got a solid amount of what we're going to be getting, so I don't wanna be at the helm here and have the ship sink.
But I'm not talking about that, Scott, I'm talking about the additional $1.8 million that we're receiving from the federal government for, uh, ma, managing through this, uh, pandemic, I'm not, I'm not talking about finally having the compressor money and finally being straight solvent, I'm not asking about new positions based on that, I, I'm making sure that you understand as a board of education that the faculty, um, would love to see more teachers, uh, added as opposed to more admin added, but I understand that, you know, things need to be what they are, so what I'm saying is that many districts and, and, and a lot of guidance that I'm reading says that a committee should be formed for this, how to expend this $1.8 million that we're receiving for the pandemic, that's what I'm basically asking.
Yeah, okay, so let me, let me speak to that, because I was, I, I maybe didn't make my, make it clear enough over there, um, that's kind of what I was trying to say, I didn't wanna step on anybody's toes because that was more of a superintendent, board president decision than it was my decision, um, but discussions that we've had in the back, we don't, like I said, they, I can send you the guidance I've gotten direct from the state, because it is pass-through money, um, and I'll send you, actually, I have a letter, I sent it to Tracy, I, I should've sent it to you.
I haven't.
Oh, you do, okay, so we are fully intending to include you once we get guidance on the application, so I don't have the application yet, I don't have, uh, a budget, I don't have anything like that, uh, speaking to Tracy and Dr. Morgano, uh, the staff will absolutely be included on how we spend that money, none of that money is spent yet.
We don't have it.
Uh, so you would be included on that, and to speak more to his point too, is now that we're on, uh, Dr. Morgano is asking you to give him a list of your priorities, and that is because now that we are on solid financial footing, we can start looking at adding, we just wanna do it carefully.
Now, I don't wanna give a party and nobody comes.
Well, the, the 1.8 is, is a one-shot deal.
The, well, 1.8 is a one-shot deal, yes.
We gotta, we gotta tell them that, if we spend, if we spend one-time money on recurring chances, we're gonna be right back where we were.
No, I'm asking, I'm just asking for voice in spending the 1.8, thank you, folks.
Give me that list.
1.8 is a one-shot deal, and we can't hire or do anything long-term on a one-shot deal.
Yeah, but if she gives me a list, I'll make the best effort I can to honor some of those requests.
And we all will, definitely, as a board we will, for sure, now that we're on solid ground, we're definitely gonna move forward and look at those, uh, places we need to, but we had to get there first.
Thank you, folks, for your consideration.
Thank you, Bonnie.
I wanna make Eldred the school everybody wants to go to.
Any other comment? Second public comment on anything? Already, with that being said, I don't think there's any need for executive session, is anybody, any board member need executive session?
No.
Uh, I think we are good to go, I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
See you next month.